Welcome, everybody. Welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. We're gonna be on for the next hour. If you have a question, please press zero. That's zero on the keypad in your phone, so the operator can queue you up and get your question going. So we need, if you want questions, if you want questions to be asked, you need to press zero, zero on the keypad on your phone. Also, we're always trying to collect email addresses so we can communicate with you better. If we don't have your email address, we'd like it, and you can give it to us by pressing seven. Seven on the keypad on your phone, seven if you wouldn't mind, so we could send you emails from time to time. I'm gonna say this a couple more times while, while, uh, more folks are getting on the line. Welcome, everybody. Welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Thank you again so much for joining us tonight. We hope you'll stay on for the whole hour. If you do have a question, please press zero. Zero on the keypad on your phone, zero if you have a question. And press seven on the keypad on your phone if you want to provide us with your email address if we don't have it already, so we can keep you up to date with matters. One last time. Welcome, everybody. Welcome to our Telephone Town Hall meeting. Now, we're gonna be on, again, like I said before, for the first, for a whole hour, and we really, really wanna get your questions. And so the best way to get your questions in is to press zero, zero on the keypad on your phone, zero if you have a question, and press seven, seven on the keypad on your phone if you wouldn't mind providing us your email address for email updates. We've got a full lineup tonight of, of different folks. A lot of, uh, stuff to cover. Uh, we're gonna be starting off, and I'm gonna be handing this off in just a second to Shelley. So we've got, uh, the superintendent on, um, we've got, uh, uh, we've got some folks in different departments, one way or the other. There's a lot to cover. I think we have one, two, three, four other guests besides the superintendent that we wanna introduce, and we want you to ask questions. They've got some stuff to go over with you, but we really want you to ask questions during this call. So again, please press zero. Zero on the keypad on your phone if you have a question. Press seven if you don't mind providing your email address for us so we can give you email updates from time to time. Um, let's see. I thi- Shelley, I think we're ready to hand this off to you. So Shelley, if you wouldn't mind starting, go ahead, please.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Good evening, Stockton Unified Families and Communities. We welcome you to the Stockton School District Coronavirus Telephone Town Hall meeting. This is our third meeting. This meeting will be featuring our superintendent, Dr. John Daisy, our assistant superintendent, Ms. Sanja Lowry, our executive director of Special Projects, Mr. Josh Pollak, our director of Comprehensive Health Services, Ms. Bernadette Betancourt, and Ms. Teresa Oden, the director of Centralized Enrollment. We are so happy that you are on the call with us this evening. We are very excited to give you up-to-date and current information around COVID-19 and our district's amazing efforts to secure learning for our youth. My name is Shelley Sussard, and I am the Stockton Unified School District Director of Community Relations. Members from our team will be on the line shortly. In the meantime, I want to give everyone an overview of how this works. Please stay on the line to listen to the Telephone Town Hall to ask a question or get help with school district-related questions. This is a live event with thousands of Stockton Unified families and stakeholders. We encourage everyone with a question to press zero. If you'd like to give us your email address to ensure that you have the most up-to-date information from Stockton Unified, you may do that by pressing seven. Again, we encourage you to press zero if you have questions and seven to give us your email address. On the line today, we have Dr. Daisy, superintendent of schools, our assistant superintendent, Ms. Sanja Lowry, our executive director of Special Projects, Mr. Josh Pollak, our director of Comprehensive Health Services, Ms. Bernadette Betancourt, and Ms. Teresa Oden, the director of Centralized Enrollment. If you have the opportunity to ask a question by pressing zero, you will receive a live operator that will take your questions. They will ensure that your question is sent over for our question-and-answer session, and if, for some reason, we don't get to your question, please note that we will still respond. As always, you can press zero if you need assistance from any of our departments. We'll take down your information and do everything we can to help. This event will last about an hour, and with thousands of people on the call, we may not be able to get to every question. Just stay on the line, and we'll do our best to support you. At the end of the call, you will also have an opportunity to leave a voicemail for the superintendent and/or any members of his team. We will get in touch with you as soon as possible. Out of abundance of caution, we are conducting this meeting from our homes this evening. Therefore, it will not be live streaming on our social media platforms. However, we will post a link to all of, on all of our social media platforms with subtitles in both English and Spanish once we have access to the recording. We would like to remind our community to download the Stockton Unified mobile app. By downloading this mobile app, you can elect to receive push notifications. All of our important information is sent out through push notifications as well as the other channels. Remember, you can press zero if you need assistance from any of our departments and seven if you'd like to give us your email address. Without further ado, I would like to introduce you to our superintendent of Stockton Unified Schools, Dr. John Daisy. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Shelley. Buenos noches, bienvenidos. I'm John Daisy. I'm superintendent of the Escuela Pública de Stockton Unificado. Good evening and welcome. I am John Daisy, and I am the superintendent of the Stockton Unified Public Schools. We're holding a live Stockton Coronavirus Town Hall again this evening, as we've been doing on each of our Mondays, to provide you with the most up-to-date and important information and best practices for your own safety, uh, here during these times. I am joined on this particular call with members of my staff, assistant superintendent Sanja Lowry, Josh Pollak, our executive director of Special Projects, Bernie Betancourt, our director of Comprehensive Health Services, and Teresa Oden, our director of Centralized Enrollment. If you have a question for myself or any of our team, please press zero. As always, the most up-to-date information you can receive is on our website. Our dedicated website page also has the StocktonUSD.net/Covid19. You can also download our free app, the Stockton Unified mobile app, which is available in Apple and Google App Stores, to receive direct updates by phone regularly. The safety and well-being of our students and the staff is always, continues to be, and will be our top priority. As everyone knows at this point, the physical classes have been canceled for the remainder of the 2020 school year. Learning, however, continues. This learning is required for all students. Our classes are distance at this point, and they are being supported by all of our teachers across our system. I do wanna make the reminder that school is not out for the year. It hasn't ended. We are still working through the fourth quarter for all of our students. Even though we can't come to our buildings, we are doing this through distance learning. We also announced over the weekend that we've updated our guidelines following, as we always have been, the Centers for Disease Control recommendations. And this time, the recommendation was for everyone to be masked in public. So that as you might come to the school to pick up lunch, for example, or breakfast, or in this few days in front of us, technology, we ask for the best of your ability if you also could wear a mask. We're excited to share many of the information that we want this evening, and I know that there is a particular piece of information on many people's minds, and that is graduation and eighth-grade promotion. We are committed to celebrating these important milestones, although not in the way that we traditionally have at that time. I can assure every parent and every senior that when you graduate, your diploma and your transcript will be ready on time. We are working with a team of teachers and a team of students on the best way to celebrate that in May, virtually, of course. You will be receiving a survey, if you're a student in the eighth grade or a senior, this week. Your opinion values tremendously to us as we want to be able to provide the best possible way to celebrate this. We know that we are also planning on making sure that in the future, when it is safe, we can host a traditional, in-person celebration and graduation like we always have in walk-the-stage. I have more later in this particular town hall, but let us provide an update now on instruction, and I'll let my colleague, Sanja Lowry, to provide this about our distance learning. Thank you, Sanja.
Good evening, and thanks to all for joining in on the call. This morning, at each of our schools to supporting engagement in distance learning, over 12,000 Chromebooks were given to students in need as parents and guardians, signed and submitted technology agreements. During this entire week through Friday, April 10th, Chromebooks will be available for parents and guardians to check out at their child's school or the district office. As I mentioned earlier, the parent or guardian will fill out a form and sign out a device for each individual student that needs a device, with the expectation that the Chromebooks will be returned to school upon when students return back. The Chromebook distribution schedule is as follows. Today, we distributed Chromebooks to kindergarten, first, second, and ninth graders at the children's school. Tomorrow, Tuesday, April 7th, we will continue to distribute Chromebooks to third, fourth, fifth, and 10th grade students at each student's school. And then on Wednesday, April 8th, we will be distributing Chromebooks to sixth, seventh, eighth, 11th, and 12th grade students once again at the home school. Beginning Thursday, and then again on Friday, April 9th and 10th, we will continue to distribute Chromebooks to any remaining students that did not get an opportunity to pick up at their home school at the SUSD District Office, 701 North Madison Street. As this pandemic is an ongoing crisis and as students remain physically out of school, as superintendent mentioned earlier, the learning will continue. We developed an educational continuity plan that provides the structure, tools, resources, professional development, and guidance for distance learning and teaching. Teachers will determine the essential learning and engage students through remote learning planning sessions the week prior to teaching. Students will engage with teachers using a platform they are currently used to, such as Google Classroom, Google Hangouts, Zoom, ClassDojo, and so on. Teachers and administrators have been working extremely hard to prepare for distance learning, and in our first round of professional development last week, we logged over 3,000 registrants and just under 1,000 teachers took a course. This is a clear demonstration of commitment to our students. All of this happened as we were preparing for Chromebook distribution, and teachers were working diligently, preparing instruction for students that began this morning. Students will engage in various methods of instruction to demonstrate mastery of standards and class or course expectations, such as participated in facilitated learning sessions, classroom discussions, projects, demonstrations, commenting on class posts, traditional reading and writing, electronically submitting, completing assignments, and/or joining a teacher's Google Hangout. Please contact the classroom teacher for all matters related to instruction. It is our commitment to ensure all students have access to their teachers and their classroom communities while learning from home. Students and families that took the technology survey indicating a need for internet connectivity, those families should have already received a phone call, text message, or email when to come to the district office to pick up a Wi-Fi or hotspot device. As we have shared before, there are additional public opportunities for families needing internet access. Families can continue to apply for two free months of service with Comcast through its Internet Essentials program by calling 1-800-934-6489. To report issues with the broken or damaged Chromebook, please utilize the district technology hotline by calling 209-933-7111, extension seven. As I close, I would like to remind all that we will get through this together by taking all of the necessary and prescribed safety precautions, but more importantly, by exhibiting grace and kindness every opportunity we can. This is the recipe for healing our community, city, state, nation, and our world. Thanks to all.
Thank you so much, Sanja. And I'm gonna ask Josh Pollak, our executive director of Special Projects, to continue providing us an update specifically around technology.
Thanks, Dr. Daisy. And first, thank you to our family students, and especially our staff that made today's distribution of over 12,000 Chromebooks possible. Distribution, just to reiterate, will continue to take place at our school site this Tuesday for grades three, four, and five, and sophomores, and this Wednesday for grades six, seven, and eight, and juniors and seniors. And those distributions will take place from 9:00 AM to 11:30 AM each day. Chromebooks will also be available for students who do not have a chance to pick up at their home site this Thursday and Friday from 3:00 to 4:30 PM at the district office, 701 North Madison Street. Parents and guardians and students must visit each student's school to get their Chromebook. And if a student has their own laptop or computer at home that they can use for distance learning, there's no need to come get a district-issued Chromebook. It is only if you need one. These devices are being lent out and borrowed like library books. As a reminder, all acceptable use policies still apply, and the district will continue monitoring devices to ensure students are utilizing them to access appropriate resources. Families who completed the Technology Access Survey on the district's website and social media and who are in need of internet should have received an email and/or text message notifying them of whether a hotspot device was available for them. Hotspot, hotspot devices will be distributed this Thursday and Friday from 3:00 to 4:30 PM at the district office, only to those students and families that were notified. The district is continuing to look for ways to support expanded internet access across Stockton students and families, and will reach out as additional devices become available. Please take the Technology Access Survey on the district's website or social media if you haven't already, if you have additional need for internet, to ensure that we have the best way to reach you. Thank you, and we look forward to seeing our families at the remaining distributions this week.
Josh, thank you so much. I want to introduce at this point our director of Comprehensive Health Services, Bernadette Betancourt. Bernie, if you'd provide us the most updated information on health-related issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Daisy. Um, Stockton Unified Student Support Services hotline is still active and provides professional providers are able to receive calls. Families can call the 209-933-711 number and select the appropriate option. That will be Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 3:30. All messages will be returned. Stakeholders will have access to speak directly with district nurses, elementary and high school counselors, and mental health clinicians. Callers can also leave messages for the Child Welfare and Attendance Department and for all other general COVID-19 questions as they relate to Stockton Unified. School counselors are currently available by phone and soon virtually during regular school hours. In addition, they can be reached through the helpline. Counselors have been calling families to guide them through Chromebook distribution and the new ways of virtual learning. When students have access to a Chromebook, school counselors will be providing lessons on social-emotional learning, college, career, and academic support through online counseling lessons. Currently, at the high schools, counselors are contacting your scholars to receive and update their four-year plan, which includes reviewing grades and next year's class schedules. High school counselors are currently working with seniors to complete FAFSA and assist with applying for local scholarships. Parents should check the high school websites regularly and view the counseling pages on the school website. If all else fails, please call the helpline. Counselors are eagerly waiting for your calls. The school counseling department is committed to providing school counseling services during these changing times. Professional nurses continue to provide infectious disease monitoring during food distribution, food distribution times at school sites to ensure people are practicing social distancing, covering their cough and sneeze, and checking in with employees to ensure they are healthy at work. Please call the helpline in the event you need to pick up your child's medications or medical supplies. And your child will, if your child will be entering seventh grade next year, they will need to have an updated T-DAP booster immunization prior to starting school. Please contact your child's primary care provider to review your child's immunization needs. Community Medical Centers and Stockton Unified has expanded its partnership to provide medical services to Stockton Unified students. The Stockton Unified Community Medical Center will be located at 1800 South Sutter Street, located at Central Enrollment. The Sutter Street Clinic will be open starting May 4th for Stockton Unified students who are Community Medical Center clients, for those who have no medical insurance and medical. The Sutter Street Clinic will be open Mondays and Thursdays throughout the summer. The services available include back-to-school physical exams and immunizations. To make an appointment, call the Community Medical Center's phone number and ask for the Sutter Street Clinic. In addition, information on COVID-19 and other school nurse contact information, please visit the StocktonUSD.net website and select Departments and Programs for the main menu to link to the Stockton Unified Health Services Department. Thanks to all.
Thank you, Bernie. I do want to remind us of this new piece of information, which I am very grateful for our department for getting ready, and the Stockton Unified Community Medical Center Clinic, which is located at 1800 South Sutter Street, will be open starting May 4th for Stockton Unified students who are Community Medical Center clients and for those students who do not have medical insurance and medical. We want to remind everyone that there are a number of numbers for support and help that we've listed. If, however, you are experiencing a medical emergency, please call your provider directly or 911. The next piece of information is new, and we know that many parents and students have a lot of questions about enrollment and admission for next year. So I'll ask us to pay attention as our director of centralized enrollment, Teresa Oden, provides this important update. Thank you, Teresa.
Hello, Dr. Daisy. Good ev- good evening, everyone. I wanted to give you updates from our admissions and family services department. Centralized enrollment is closed until further notice. Online enrollments will only be accepted at this time. If you need assistance with enrollment, please call 209-933-7028 or email enrollment@stocktonusd.net. Currently, online school registration is open for grades PK through 12 for the 2019-2020 school year, as well as transitional kinder and kindergarten for 2020-2021 school year. You can access our online registration tool on the Stockton Unified School District website, Department of Centralized Enrollment. New registration for grades 1 through 12 for the 2020-2021 school year will begin on June 1st, 2020. Only transitional kinder and kindergarten registrations will be accepted prior to June 1st. We are no longer accepting applications for any type of school transfer for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year. Open enrollment inter-district transfers for the 2020-21 school year is an option for a parent or guardian who wishes to register, admit, or enroll their student at a school other than a school and they're designated as U- as USC attendance area. For grades K through 8, open enrollment applications are currently being accepted. This application period opened on March 25th and will end on April 24th of 2020. The open enrollment application period for grades 9 through 12 ended on February 28th. Notifications of application status will be sent out via mail after June 1st of 2020. Application periods for the inter-district transfers for the 2020-21 school year have been extended through May 28th of 2020. An approved inter-district transfer is required when a parent or legal guardian wishes to enroll their student at a school outside of the district boundaries. Specialty school notifications for the first-round lottery results for the following specialty schools will be sent out via mail, which started today, April 6, 2020, for Commodore Skills, Fremont, Hazelton, Hong Kingston, Taft, Cole, and Primary Years Academy. All other specialty and/or charter school notifications will be sent out by the individual school site. The second-round specialty application window opened on April 1st and closes on May 25th of 2020. Please do not resubmit an application if you've already submitted in the first round. The second-round lottery will be held on June 25th, and the notifications will be sent out via mail after July 13th of 2020. Our families in transition and team would like to inform you of our modified services to comply with the shelter-in-place rule. McKinnon v. federal law remains in effect for our homeless families and unaccompanied youth. Our department is providing support services via electronic devices from home until further notice. Families in transition will continue to provide support services in the following ways: receive and review referrals, provide information regarding McKinnon v. federal laws and rights, provide resources, complete intakes over the phone, make contact with our current caseload managers to assess needs, inform families and students about district updates, meals, and instruction, and contact our unaccompanied youth to make sure they have laptops and are aware of meal distribution, and finally, provide bus passes for our families. Please check our Stockton Unified School District website, Department of Centralized Enrollment, for additional updates. If you need to contact staff in the families in transition or foster youth, please call them 337-852-0987. We have additional links located on our Families in Transition website under the Central Enrollment Department, which provides information regarding shelters, food banks, and more. An additional San Joaquin County 211 provides assistance in locating additional San Joaquin County resources. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Teresa. We know a lot of information was just provided and this information can also be found again on our website in dealing with centralized enrollment. And I would also want to remind all of our community members that the website, Stockton Strong, contains a great many additional resources for family members, community members, and students, along with our 211. At this point, I'll turn this back to Shelley so we can begin our Q and A.
Thank you so much to all of our speakers. We will now begin the question and answer portion of our call. If we could please have the first question.
You bet. It's Jessie. Jessie, welcome to the call. Jessie, go ahead with your question if you would, please.
Hi, I just wanted to know that kids need to be present by the time of pickup.
Can you say that again, Jessie? I did not hear it. I apologize.
Sorry, I was just asking if the kids need to be present at the time of pickup.
I know, but you do need to be able to sign and have your student's ID number and the schools are ready for that.
Let's take another question right away if we can. Christina, Christina, welcome to the telephone town hall meeting. Christina, go ahead with your question, please.
Hi, I was wondering if the subs for the Stockton Unified Transportation Department, if they were getting paid too as well?
That is a good question. I know that our substitutes for our teachers are, because of their status. I will find out this week and I will post it on our website for our substitutes for transportation. I apologize I don't have that information immediately available.
From the Spanish side, Ismail. What's going to happen with graduation for kids in middle school going to high school?
Thank you, Ismail. The very same that I mentioned before for seniors is that we will be doing a way to celebrate promotions at the end of this year. Students have been helpful in designing that. If you are an eighth grader or an eighth grade family, you will also be receiving a survey this week to give us your opinion about the best way to do that. And in all cases, we look forward to a special celebration when our eighth graders join us as ninth graders in the upcoming school year.
Thank you, sir. I wanted to remind people if they want to provide us with their email address, if we don't have it already, please press 7. 7 on the keypad of your phone, 7, if you want to provide us your email address. Anna's next. Anna, welcome to the call. Anna, go ahead with your question, please.
Hi, the question that I had is the work that the teachers are providing right now on Classroom Google, is that going to be graded or is it mandatory?
That's a good question, Anna. Yes, it is going to be graded. The work that was in the packets for the first week we came back, the only work that's not graded. We're back at regular learning and students are responsible for participating daily and this work will constitute our ability to provide the fourth quarter grade. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Let's take another question. It's going to be from Victoria. Victoria, welcome to the call. Victoria, go ahead with your question, please.
Hello, I have actually two questions. My first question is, my son was supposed to go to science camp, but of course, you know, it's canceled. So would he have the opportunity to go in sixth grade by chance? Do you know anything about the science camp? Because I feel like it's like a once-in-a-lifetime for him and he's actually curious too if he's going to be able to go next year or not.
Thank you, Victoria. It is a once-in-a-lifetime. Having seen that and talked to the students who also come back from that, so I understand what he's thinking. It has been grade-specific and so the answer is, of course, sadly, it's canceled this year. We are trying to determine if we would be able to, through the county, have additional opportunities next year. That has not been determined yet. This is one that is done in joint with the county. So it is more likely he'll learn about that when he returns to school for the next school year.
Our question from the Spanish side is from Dora. I have three kids.
Can I just hold on?
Oh, sure. Sorry, sorry.
She said she had two questions.
Oh, 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 I moved her. I apologize for that.
Okay.
I did. I got quick on the draw. Sorry about that.
Okay, email the question, please.
Sorry about that. Dora's next. Dora, I have three kids in school. Do I need to get computers for them? And I do not have access to the internet. What can I do?
Two, let's respond to the two parts to that. If your children, Dora, need a Chromebook, then yes, they are available at the school where your children go to and you can let us know if you need assistance on internet and you can also let us know that when you pick the Chromebook up and someone will reach back, just as Mr. Pollak said, and try to help you in securing a hotspot or internet service at your home.
Teddy's next. Teddy, welcome to the call. Teddy, go ahead with your question if you would, please.
Good evening, Mr. Daisy. I believe you are doing a wonderful job leading us during these uncertain times. Before the school shutdown.
Thank you. I really appreciate it and it's our whole team. And I want to say I appreciate that, but I really do need to give a shout out to all of the employees who quite frankly have been on the front lines and thanks for letting me say that.
Before the school shutdown.
What is your question, sir?
Before the school shutdown, I was assigned and committed to a long-term PE assignment to begin after spring break. As the dates for school to resume continued to be pushed back, my long-term assignment kept being pushed back as well. As of April 2nd, I received an email saying they canceled the position altogether. My question is that will I be compensated as a long-term role or will I be compensated by the average of December, January, and February?
Can you, I just didn't get the initial. You said a long-term what assignment, sir?
Long-term PE, physical education.
Oh, P-O, as a substitute teacher, you mean?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if the service is being provided, for which at this point, I really need you to contact the site where that was going to be, meaning that the teacher that you may have been assigned to may not be able to be able to provide the distance learning, then you would be employed for that. If that is not the case, then you will be treated as all of our substitutes. We made a decision in the district to do our best to try to help everybody in this really, really difficult time and there is a formula for compensation for the month even though you're not subbing.
Thank you for that. Let's get Ralph up next. Ralph, welcome to the call. Ralph, go ahead with your question, please.
Yeah, I want to know what's going to happen to all the students and stuff in their classroom because my two sons, their last day was March 13th on that Friday and, you know, with everything going on with this virus, we just want to know what's going to happen with their stuff that they left there.
Thank you for answering, asking this question. Many parents have asked the same and so have employees. So the schools are secure. They're actually locked. The classrooms are locked. They went through a deep cleaning process. When we are given the green light by the County Department of Health to allow people back into schools, we will in an orderly way allow people to retrieve their belongings. We have no idea what date that's going to be. I might also remind our callers that our best advice and our best medical experts at the county level indicate that the worst of infections and people's sickness is still about a month away. And so this won't be immediate, but when it's ready, we know that they'll be there and our young scholars can come pick up their belongings.
From the Spanish side, Alexandria. Chromebooks were given to kids today. I was working and was not able to pick one up. Can I still get one?
Absolutely, yes. You can get one tomorrow at the school where your child attends in the morning or you can get one on Wednesday at the school where your child attends in the morning. Or if that did not work for you, 3:30 in the afternoon on Thursday and Friday, you can come to my office, which is 701 North Madison Street, and they'll be distributed then as well.
Thank you, sir. Jose's next. Jose, welcome to the call. Jose, go ahead with your question, please.
Are the schools' playgrounds going to be changed into new equipment? And how will the kids be graded on their third trimester?
Okay, so the playground equipment is not being changed. It's been cleaned and it will continue to be cleaned, but they are closed right now. So we do want to make that really clear. There is an order in place for no public gathering and certainly not in public places and playgrounds, but those are closed. Grades for our last trimester, guidance went out to our teachers today and all students will receive grades, just like they did before. And the grades will be a combination of their engagement and the work that's been guided through their individual teachers.
Let's take Stacy next if we can. Stacy, welcome to the call. Stacy, please go ahead with your question.
Yeah, I was wondering, so for virtual learning, I've been using Google Meet and I teach kindergarten, so I've been doing small group of like three to four kids. So how many hours a day do you recommend?
I appreciate all of the work that you are doing and I can't thank you enough. I think the guidance, we have put guidance out through our curriculum office on attention spaned virtually at certain ages. It sounds to me like you are doing the right thing. I'll again put this up on our website so that we can give you the best guidance. Clearly, this looks different than it does for a 10th grade student.
Well, let's take another question right away. Rainya, welcome to our call. Go ahead with your question, please.
So my question was if you guys maybe considered postponing the senior's graduation later on in the summer instead of going virtual? I mean, considering the kids worked so hard for so many years to, just to give them the opportunity to walk the stage in front of friends and family.
Yes, ma'am. That's exactly what we're planning on doing. We're planning on doing both. And right now, we'll release those plans in a week, but it seems like the best time for an actual is going to be during the winter break when students who have gone to college can come home and students who are working have a little bit of time off so we can have, like you just said, a real graduation where they can walk the stage, just like we would have normally done.
I want to remind people if they want to provide us their email address, they can, please press 7. 7 on the keypad of your phone, 7, if you want to provide us your email address. We're still taking questions. It's zero for that. Let's take Marcia next. Marcia, welcome to the call. Marcia, please go ahead.
Yes, I have a question. I have a child that's in 12th grade and she has, she has to go after school three days a week, three times a week to get her credits up. She has 10 credits, so she has to finish. And since she doesn't have that, how is that going to work by her graduating?
Okay, Marcia, there is the ability for credit makeup. If I would ask you to call or email your daughter's guidance counselor, who will show you and explain to you how that can be transitioned to online. We have several programs in order to do that.
Let's take another question right away if we can. Jay, welcome to our call. Jay, go ahead with your question, please.
Hello, my name is Jay. I'm the senior class president at Edison High School. Is Shelley still on the call?
Yes, she is. Hold on one second. Shelley, second?
I'm here. How can I help you?
Hi, Shelley. So regarding the recent school closures and everything and how prominent everything's being canceled, me and the presidents, we're planning on doing something with the money that we still have in our account because we still do have a lot of money and we don't want it to go to waste. So I was wondering if we can set up something with you or if there's anything possible so that we can throw something at the end of the year for the seniors.
Well, thank you so much. You guys are absolutely amazing and you are absolutely welcome to contact me at... Do you have a pen?
Yes.
and I'd be happy to set something up. Really appreciate you.
And also, let me just comment as in I've also had the very similar question with other class presidents from our other high schools. And one just piece of guidance, it is either your funds and they will be protected. We just want to be careful not to plan something while we're still not allowed to gather publicly. So we'll give you all the help and support we can, but please do not worry that that money will be lost. It will not be.
Nicole wants us to read her question. When, where can we get mobile hotspot and what do we need to do to apply for it?
So there is an opportunity to apply for those through the district. I'm going to ask Josh, who's on this call, to remind us of that process, about how we can do that and also for Josh to remind us of additional support for families. Josh, are you available?
Yes, hi, this is Josh. So the district has a technology access survey that families can complete to let us know of their need for internet access and if they need a hotspot and what the best contact information is to reach them. The best way to fill out that survey is to go to the following website, That's 12375 are the last numbers. There are surveys on our social media pages as well as the website and if you complete that survey, we'll reach out to you as soon as a hotspot is available.
Let's take another question.
I would also add to that and that is if the person who's just called us has not the ability to get on and see our website, you can certainly leave your name and number at your school and it will get to Josh Pollak or myself, John Daisy, and we will route information back to you through a phone call to let you know when a hotspot is available.
Mario's next. Mario, welcome to the call. Mario, go ahead with your question, please.
Yes, this is Mario. I believe you did answer the question earlier when you mentioned, I mentioned how kids could make up credits because I know they had what they call Cyber-Hi at Chavez. And so I believe you did answer the question, but ultimately, my question was how can kids make up credits if they were either graduating or trying to make up credits before the end of the school year?
Yes, Mario, you're right. Cyber-Hi and APEX are two programs that we use and they're still available to be used. Please contact your child's guidance counselor about how to transition over to that right now.
Well, another question is Alma. Alma, welcome to our call. Alma, go ahead with your question, please.
Oh, hello, my name's Alma. I'm calling to ask will I be able to register my daughter for preschool? I signed her up online and they're supposed to call me back for an interview, but since we're on lockdown, you know, we can't have an interview. So I was wondering, will I be able to register for this coming school year?
Yes, you will, Alma. And you have the availability to check on our website, which has a link to centralized enrollment and that has all of the information about how to deal with next year's enrollment. So currently, registration is available, new registration for grades 1 through 12, starting June 1st. Transitional K and K are available and accepted for registration now. There is a phone number, I want to repeat it again, And you can leave a message about the status of your own child's registration and we will get back to you.
Freddie is next from the Spanish side. My son is in second grade. Can you please tell me how they are going to do in classes? Does an adult have to be present? I have the computers, just don't know what else to do.
So yes, as you just heard earlier, one of our kindergarten teachers just spoke about how they're setting that up and doing it. The same is true. There are specific questions in how to reach your teacher. Please call your school or email your school principal and we can make sure that happens. And an adult doesn't need to be present. I'm a dad also, so sometimes I want to make sure that they're sitting and being engaged around this. But just like you don't need to be present in the classroom, it's the same here.
From the Spanish side again, Irene. She asks straight up, when will you have online classes? And I think you've gone over that, but just tell us again if you would, please.
Yes, for almost all subjects, those are up and running. There are some specialized subjects which have additional requirements and those are ones, for example, like AP and IB. Your teacher will guide you because those have a national curriculum component to it, but they are up and running. And please connect with your school and information is available on your school's website or call directly.
April's next. April, welcome to the call. April, please go ahead with your question.
Yes, I wanted to know, does every student have to have a T-DAP on the pond when they return to school?
I'm going to review that for you. Thank you for answering that. No, every student does not, but I'm going to ask our colleague, Bernadette Betancourt, to speak about the very specific grade that we have to be mindful of. Bernie?
Thank you, Isabel. That was a really good question. So the requirement for a T-DAP is for incoming seventh graders. So we encourage those parents who have a sixth grader to start thinking about having and getting prepared for next year, giving your physician a call to see if you need that seventh grade T-DAP vaccine. If you're not sure, you can also call our hotline at 933-7111 and select option 1 to speak with a nurse and they can review your child's immunizations with you.
Another question comes from Janice. Janice, welcome to the call. Janice, please go ahead.
Oh, hi. My name is Janice and my question is, does Stockton Unified School District still qualify to get the Stockton Scholar? to get the Stockton Scholar?
The Stockton Unified School, the students in Stockton Unified School District absolutely are qualified for the scholarships of Stockton Scholars. And I'm really glad you raised the question because this is the time of year where there are many other scholarships that students are available, that are available for students as well. I would urge you to have the child contact his or her counselor for very specific information about that.
And I want to read, somebody had a question come in like this. They want, the caller wanted to have you repeat the information about senior graduation, if you wouldn't mind, please.
I will. I'm glad to do that again. This week, students who are seniors and eighth graders and their families will receive a survey about giving us your best advice. We've had a team of students and administrators and teachers working for several weeks on providing a plan. We believe we'll be finalized with that plan next week and be able to share that. We want to make it very clear that every single senior who graduates that their diploma and their transcript will be ready on time because we know you need those for college admission. Those who are going to serve in our armed forces need that. Those who go to work need that. We are all ready for that. How we will do the ceremony is what is being finalized and we know that we are committed to making sure that we can provide the traditional opportunity to walk the stage in our arena and be with your class. That is likely to take place in the late fall or early winter of the next year, when it's safe to gather again and when people who at least have gone to college, university are on break and we can have that opportunity.
Omar, you're next. Omar, go ahead with your question, if you would, please.
Hello, how is the district ensuring that students are doing good academically, stress and anxiety wise? Because from my knowledge, transitioning from, from school to teaching, a different teaching style, it's not as easy as it sounds for a high school student.
You're right, Omar. It's actually not, and I'm glad you raised that. We're trying to do our best in an environment where we can't see you and talk with you side by side. So we know that our counselors and our mental health clinicians have been busy every single day talking with students and in some cases, groups of students. We would say that if you certainly feel like this is a transition that is providing you with a particular high level of stress, please reach out and please reach out to your school. And you can go on our website and find out how to contact counselor or you can call our helpline and speak directly to a mental health clinician. I really want to thank you for the question and urge you not to wait if that is someone you want to speak to about that.
We are running out of time, so sir, if you could bring us to the finish line, you might have some final comments come in for some folks if you want.
Okay.
But we've got just a couple minutes to wrap up, if you wouldn't mind, please.
Absolutely. I, as always, I want to thank people. We have far more people questions than we have time. As we've been saying throughout the call, please leave email and we will get back to you on your question. We are out of time at this point, but you can leave voicemail at the end of this conference. I want to remind everybody that we've been doing this on Monday evening and next Monday was already scheduled to be a school closure day. So that means that basically offices and staff, even those who have been emergency coming in and giving so much service, we all will be off next Monday. So Monday, April 20th will be our next regular town hall and we're committed to doing this right through this pandemic and this crisis so that we can do our best to remain connected. We hear so many individuals who want to provide volunteer support. We appreciate that tremendously. We are being and growing very mindful and careful of the ever-increasing guidelines of making sure that as few people as possible are out in public. And so we have your information and we will reach out to you if we need that type of support. I want to thank you for participating today. I do want to close by reminding people that the guidelines from the county and the state are very serious. Obviously, we know about personal protection, washing your hands and if you are sneezing or coughing to do that in your arms. And now to have public, any form of being out in the public is to have a masking. We've actually put up on our website the ability on how you can do that, easy without sewing, so that right straight from the Surgeon General's guidance, please adhere to these and adhere to social distancing. And also please, we urge you to follow the guidelines about not being out and not being in public areas unless it's an emergency, unless you're an essential worker, need to go to a pharmacist or get some food. It's what's going to get us through this. We know that we have about a month of, as the expert said, our toughest period of time in front of us. We'll be with you throughout this entire piece. Know that every single person in this district loves and cares for every one of our students and families, guardians, caregivers, and we cannot wait to see you again when it is safe. So thank you very much and thanks for participating in today's town hall.